All right, I would like to continue the regular meeting of the Bronxville Board of Trustees for April 14, 2025, and just ask all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. We just finished an hour and a half work session and got a great deal done, and this is our meeting of, as customary, appointments and annual actions. Mr. Palmer, do I need to -- they need to be read, correct? Or can they be put in the record? Counsel, do I need to read all the -- or can they be?
If you have a list of actions that everyone has, if you want to take an omnibus motion to do whatever the list says, you can do that.
Okay. Do I have anyone who has a problem with this? The same things we do every year.
Right, and just to --
I think I might just mention the boards and committees.
And I think the annual appointments of the first page also, I think that's what we know.
Okay, because the rest are about newspapers. They're very perfunctory. All right, so I may read some of them, but then ask for -- perfect. Okay. So we have our appointments. Our deputy mayor, Robert Underhill, as deputy mayor for a one-year term. Jane Palmer is village clerk, one-year term. All the following are one-year terms. Lori Boss, village treasurer, receiver of taxes. Kate Fitzpatrick, deputy village treasurer. Mark Heinbachel, village assessor. Ray Gesellbrock, village historian. Ronnie James Rich, village prosecutor. Dulce Angel, registrar. And Mary Ann Magliata, deputy registrar. And adds to village boards and committees. On our planning board, Michael Ching is reappointed for a two-year term to 2027. And Richard Gegenwart is a newly appointed member for a five-year term to 2030. To the design review committee, Neil Stefano and Kate Fixmer, reappointed for two-year terms to 2027. Anita Navab, newly appointed to 2026 to fill an open seat. Zoning board, Jane Regan, reappointed to a five-year term to 2030. Ethics board, Donald Kennedy, reappointed to a two-year term to 2027. At the library, board of trustees, Josh Rucci and Nina Everson, each reappointed for a three-year term to 2028. And at this juncture, it's a thank you to our staff for taking on all those roles, and a special thank you for all the volunteers mentioned on these boards and committees, those who continue to serve us so well. And I will tell you, any new name that you heard is somebody who came forward and said, "I would like to join a board," and we keep track of all those names and call upon people. So tonight, I just want to ask you, if you're interested in joining a board, call me, and we don't forget you. And when there's a slot that works for the board you're interested in, or we feel like you might give us a skill set balance, we will give you a call. So welcome to our new board members as well.
Mayor, just a clarification. Ms. Navab to the design review, that's to fill a vacancy that runs through May of 2026?
Exactly.
Okay. That's a little ambiguous from the word. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All righty, then, do I have a motion to accept our annual appointments?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right.
And then should I propose, Mayor, a separate resolution regarding the annual actions as set forth in the attachment that all the board members have, and which are, as I understand it, all customary renewals of authority in the same form as the board has done on an annual basis in recent memory?
I think that's good to button it up, and I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion pass.
And I was just going to clarify, just on the annual actions. So no changes, with the exception of that we did add our fund balance policy along with to be next to our procurement policy, just so we memorialize that. That was what the policy that you approved last December about the minimum fund balance, and at which time we review our fund balance. So otherwise, we clarified that.
Right, otherwise, it was our usual.
Right, and I think the mileage reimbursement is now up to 70 cents, and again, that's as identified by the IRS, so.
All righty. Okay, thank you. And then we will move on to my report.
Did we approve that, or just had the motions?
Did we have a motion? All those, I think we --
We included in Bill's motion.
Yes, we included in Bill's.
Did we vote on it?
Yes, we did vote on it. Yeah. Okay, I just want to mention a couple of really nice things. Our women's club is, this year is their 100th anniversary, and they started with an opening tea last Sunday, which was absolutely terrific, well-attended, and they're going to have a lot of events this year. And they just asked if anybody would, they would love the village to join them and celebrate with them. And I asked them to try to get a really nice showing for the Memorial Day Parade, because it would be nice to, you know, give them a special spot in the parade. The library fundraiser is coming up, is it Friday night?
25th.
Yes, this coming Friday night. And trustee Fulton, are there still more tickets available?
Not this Friday, it's a week from Friday.
It's the 25th, the 25th. So if anyone would like to go, they can just go online and get tickets. It's a night at the races, and it sounds really nice. Then Mr. Palmer and I have gotten involved, thanks to Mr. Palmer and the Bronx River Alliance, and he and I went to the Botanical Gardens and kind of shared our input about our experience with how the Bronx River functions at mile 23 here. And I think it's really helped, thanks to Jim, to have our voices heard with this group. And it was an afternoon well-spent. And then I think, oh, we went, when are we going? There's a wonderful dedication. The working gardeners have donated dogwoods. And we'll keep you posted, but there's going to be a little ceremony. They're helping us replace the dogwoods that were originally there behind the tennis courts. There was a whole row of dogwoods, and they decided that would be their project. So I'll keep you posted, but we're going to have a nice ceremony. And again, the incredible public-private partnerships. And then Mr. Palmer got there late and missed out on the famous new jelly croissants at the New Tops Bakery. This gentleman has, I think he told me, five other bakeries, and people told me his one in Montauk. They stand outside 50 in a row to get his jelly croissants. And he had a wonderful open house, free coffee, and the jelly croissants went in about a half hour, and they were divine. So we welcome our new merchant to the village. And then, ending on terribly sad news, our former everything, head of the chamber, head of Park Sterling Realty, and a dear friend of this village, Leah Carroll, passed away at age 55 of cancer. And she was just the village's biggest cheerleader, booster, smart as a whip. I partnered with her and counted on so much, her eyes and ears and her measured voice. And there will be a commemoration of Leah on April 26. And I know so many of her village friends want to be there, so. And Mr. Palmer, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. Let's see. First, just a reminder to everyone that village offices will be closed this Friday, the 18th, on observance of Good Friday. That's a --
That means no trash pickup.
Including no trash pickup on Friday. Also, just wanted to update everyone on, again, the, just a reminder that the water supply within the Village of Bronxville is owned and operated by Viola Water, that's the old United Water. Last week, we were receiving formerly Suez, formerly Aquarian. Last week, we received several complaints about discolored water. We reached out to Viola, Violia. They looked, they sent an investigator. I still don't have an explanation for the dirty water. But if a resident does have dirty water, we certainly encourage you to call Viola. You can also email them. If you call Villatral, we will reach out. There are numerous reasons why the water might be dirty, including potentially a break, but they did not find a break. But I mention this because this time of year, Violia does also begin their hydrant flushing program, which they do in the spring. And when they hydrant flush, that will, to test the hydrants, but also to flush the water, but in so doing, that will stir up any of the turbidity that already exists in the bottom of the pipes, the sedimentation. And what Violia says is, we try to give everyone advance notice on that. But what I've certainly learned here in the village is that hydrant flushing on one end of the village can absolutely even impact the other when you're in a small area and there's considerable draw on the water supply. So we try to do some outreach to residents. Again, reasons for water being brown, it could be hydrant flushing, it could be a broken pipe. In this case, they didn't find a broken pipe. But what I will also provide a link to on the village website is the water quality report that the water company, in this case, Violia, again, who serves much of Lower Westchester, is required to do by the Department of Health, annually file a water quality report, so everyone can see that the water that you drink is sampled on a regular basis, at least monthly. But I hesitate on providing specific guidance to residents, because obviously, it's not the village's water supply, it's not our distribution system, but we are trying to get to the bottom of potentially what that other issue was. But unfortunately, even this time of year, you do have landscapers that will utilize and access a hydrant that they should not be, that Violia might not also. But I just, again, wanted to mention that we don't own the water supply or the distribution system, but you can certainly email us.
I think it's important to know that last week, the brown water was all over the village, and we didn't get a notice, because it was a big surprise to the water company as well.
Right.
Because I know folks were asking me, "Gosh, you used to always tell us when something like this, so we wouldn't be doing laundry," or whatever. And we didn't know, and they were surprised when we called them.
Right. If we get any kind of notice, although, I have asked Viola repeatedly, even when they do their hydrant flushing, they have the capability of doing their own robo-calls to the community, which they can and should. But in this case, we did just send a notice out that we had reached out to them, but yes, we did have no prior notice. All right, just wanted to mention that. Also, just wanted to mention that the board did meet on April 1st with our consulting engineer to review a revised plan for improvements to the Crawford Drainage Basin. That's the project that the village has been working on with the town of Eastchester to address flooding conditions to the impacted areas of the End of Middle, End of Alder, End of Grove, End of Duesenberry. And the purpose of reviewing an alternative plan is that we have not heard back from the town of Eastchester on their plans and their designs and their continued review. So we want to be, the board wants to be able to provide some immediate relief to the residents in that neighboring area of the Crawford Drainage Basin. So now we do have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday at 3:00 with the engineer to walk those impacted neighbors through a, some of the immediate improvements, one of which being the replacement of sanitary sewer lines, which the board notes have been approved by the Department of Health, but also the creation of a smaller detention area in the wooded area of the area that's, the wooded area part of the Crawford Park, also known as the Meadows, which is also owned by the village along with that entire stretch from the End of Alder down to the nature preserve. Just the only other item is, of course, appreciate everyone's patience with the downtown improvements. As the board, as you probably know, the crosswalks were finally striped early this morning. The parking stalls were striped last week, just the handicapped stalls still need to be striped, and then a couple of crosswalks over on Park Place and Craft. But otherwise, the paving went through without a hitch, and then at least one of the outdoor dining structures has already started to go up. And that's the other news, is that the on-street dining program does commence on the 15th tomorrow. So we do have two establishments that are working on getting their final approval from the village, so they can open. But appreciate everyone's patience with the street improvements. Now we just need to get the irrigation systems and the water turned on for those locations. But, and I've done walkarounds with the Bronxville Beautification Committee, and of course, they're excited to add to the flowers in those locations. So that's it.
Hamilton.
And yes, and the Hamilton drainage improvements have, those were ongoing throughout the winter, and they just picked up the pace a little bit today, now that some additional catch patients have come in that we previously talked about. So appreciate everyone's patience for that work, too. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Trustees, I know you've all been involved in different things, so would anybody like to just tell the public different things that you've been working on?
I'll just pick up the theme from the downtown.
Okay, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of activity, the street improvements look really great. I think we've all heard a lot of good feedback about how that is going to help with the traffic and the pedestrian safety in that area. The Chamber of Commerce has been doing a lot of great work. Despite the horrible weather of Tuesday, the Easter Bunny still made it to town.
Nice picture.
Yeah, they had it set up in front of Silk Road, and they were distributing, you know, Easter baskets and a treasure hunt, counting eggs. So that seemed to be really well-attended, and we thank --
Count the jelly, count the beans.
Yeah, count the beans, so it was really well-done. And we thank all the merchants for participating in that, and for Leslie Corcoran and Vanessa O'Frio for manning the table and getting the volunteers to make that happen. The other chamber news, I guess, that's worth mentioning at this point, is the farmer's market is opening on May 10th. So that's really the start of beautiful weather and the season, I think. We've all finished with winter, I guess, so that's, is, that will be coming soon as well.
All right.
Mayor?
Yes, certainly.
So the mayor and I had an opportunity, actually the honor, to attend the Iona, the annual Iona Scholarship Gala last week in Shipriani in New York City. The honoree was Steve Corwin, who is CEO and president of NYPD, the entire NYPD system, which, you know, involves both Columbia and Cornell. It was obviously in recognition of the gift that Iona, so that NYPD gave Iona of 20 million to get started or to help add to the Iona Health Science Center. So it was a really big demonstration and terrific event showcasing the dynamic partnership between, you know, Iona University, which is here in Bronxville, and NYPD Westchester, and their partnership that's happening. And it was just a really, really amazing event. And the mayor and Bronxville got a lot of shout-outs for just, you know, having us be a place that, you know, this can all come together. So there's been maybe three years, two to three years of graduate work going on on the Westchester, I mean, sorry, on the Bronxville campus of Iona. And NYPD Westchester has already hired seven graduates from the program.
Yeah.
So with many more in the pipeline, and we'll be hiring more with this graduate class. So it's just getting started. But I think we were incredibly lucky to, we feel really lucky that Bronxville's got two renowned institutions in its town, both NYPD and Iona. And for them to have this amazing partnership is even, it just takes it to another level. So we feel very lucky on that, and --
I mean, we came out of there walking on air, feeling like, how lucky are we to have those two institutions and their working hand in glove? It's pretty impressive.
Really remarkable work.
Thank you for taking the time out to do that, representing us.
Yeah, well, Mary's particularly great on keeping that relationship going, trustee Barron, I should say. Yeah. All right, anyone, deputy mayor?
I'd like to just mention that we have, after extensive negotiations, we have found a honorable grand marshal for the Memorial Day Parade, and we have, we negotiated with the advance team for Dr. George Eunice, and he has agreed to serve as the grand marshal for the 2025 Memorial Day Parade. He was thrilled. George is a long, long time resident of Bronxville, orthopedic surgeon, and he, he's also first-generation immigrant. He started his career immediately upon going to, leaving high school and going to NYU in the ROTC program, ended up going through medical school and served as an orthopedic surgeon in the U.S. Army for, I think, until his mid-30s. And he served during the waning years of the Vietnam War, so he had the opportunity to work on some, you know, terrible injuries, but saved, you know, thousands of lives and helped thousands of people. There couldn't be a more deserving person than Dr. Eunice to represent the village for this Memorial Day.
Perfect. And then, yes, trustee Fredericks.
Well, the Eunice family is a nice segue to what I have to report on, which relates to the Bronxville Historical Conservancy, because Judy Eunice, I believe, served a term as president of the Bronxville Historical Conservancy. So the Eunice family, as with so many families in Bronxville, contributes on multiple fronts from all its members. In any event, I have two matters to report on relating to the Bronxville Historical Conservancy. First of all, the annual gift to the community, or one of the annual gifts to the community from the Conservancy, is the Brendan Gill Memorial Lecture. This year, the lecturer was Doris Kearns Goodwin. She spoke to a full house at Sarah Lawrence. Deputy Mayor Underhill and I were privileged to be there as representatives of the village. And trustee Knapp was there as well. In any event, all of us who were there, I think, felt we were very lucky to hear outstanding remarks by Doris Kearns Goodwin, an illustrious author and historian, writer of textbooks on American history. So I want to thank the Conservancy for its role in, once again, bringing a distinguished speaker to the village. Second, the Historical Conservancy has agreed to match a $75,000 commitment of the villages to a new tree planting project. The details of that project, many of them still need to be worked out, but this plan has been in front of the board for a couple of months, is under consideration by the Conservancy for a couple of months. And it's a follow-on, really, to the Conservancy's 2016 report on defining a suburban landscape, a document which was co-authored, mayor, by your predecessor, Nancy Hand.
Yes, it was.
And it recommended, amongst other things, taking common sense and reasonably cost steps to preserve the village's landscape and environment for future generations by, amongst other things, planting more trees. We'll have a resolution that we'll vote on later, but I think village administrator Palmer, maybe we can just post the proposal on the village website, residents can look at it. But I'm very excited by the prospect, because we're going to really create sort of a seed money fund to subsidize the planting of trees, which will try to bring in all residents of the community to identify spots in the village where in village right-of-ways, there may be bear spots where there used to be trees. Some of us who grew up in the village, you know, we certainly know certain streets, but they have a lot fewer trees on them than they did at an earlier time. As many of you know, the village was developed primarily in the 1920s. A lot of trees that were planted at that stage are now 100 years old or more. They've either already died off or are nearing the end of their useful lives. And I think this is an opportunity to have another one of those public-private partnerships, where we're working with residents, with a wonderful partner, the Bronxville Historical Conservancy, to plant more trees. Obviously, the village right-of-ways exist all over the village, in every neighborhood, outside of homes, outside of apartment buildings. The details of this plan will hopefully be fully developed by the fall, so we can launch them. And another aspect of the plan is to identify sites for trees on village-owned campuses, the library campus, the village hall campus, and village parks, so that we have a plan as to where we have needs on village-owned properties. But I think, again, one of the concepts, the details all have to be worked out and will be approved, but one of the concepts that's been talked about is if we have a list of, let's say, you know, 15 trees that the village would really like to have planted, we're hopeful that there are members of the community, and I'm confident there are members of the community, who would say, "Oh gee, I would love to donate X amount of money to plant a tree in honor of so-and-so," or in memory of a family member, and really have a lasting memorial. The last thing I'll say on it, although I think we'll have a vote on a resolution a little later in the meeting, is that the village, again, has lost tree canopy. It does take a certain amount of vision to get people to plant long-lived, mature hardwood trees. You know, we see a lot of hardwood trees come down. Too often, they're replaced just with, you know, an Arbor VDI or something that provides instant gratification, but is really not an investment in the environmental capital of the village. So this is a plan that I think some of us have thought about for a long time. Nancy Hand had come up with a lot of these ideas before any of us. And the important thing is, again, to really give a heartfelt thank you to the Historical Conservancy for matching the village's commitment. And so I think with $75,000 from the village, $75,000 from the Conservancy, and then sort of the matching component that residents will pay into it, I'm really hopeful that this will be a plan that will generate, you know, $200,000, $300,000 in buying power for trees in the foreseeable future. And I think it'll be a really great way for the village to celebrate 2026, our nation's 250th birthday. So that's the report.
Thank you, thank you.
Well done, Bill.
And we have lost over 50 street trees just to storms in the past 10 years, so let alone aging. So this is a very needed project, so.
Yeah, and just to add, the village does spend about $100,000 or a little less per year on trees, but the majority, the vast majority of that budget is on tree maintenance and removing trees. And this just seems to be a good time to have a project, public-private partnership, to do the other part of that equation, which is not only removing dead trees and taking care of the ones we have, but planting -- trees and taking care of the ones we have, but planting new ones for the future. And Mayor, as I know you've mentioned on various occasions, trees can be part of some of our anti-flood mitigation efforts. Trees soak up a lot more water than any of us as individuals can drink or squeegee off of our yard. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And I will go on to the approval of minutes. And we have two sets of minutes. And I want to thank Mary Ann for them. They are the executive minutes, work session minutes, and regular meeting minutes of March 10, 2025, and then the minutes from our special work session meeting of April 1. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? We pass the minutes. Mr. Palmer, do you want to do the public hearing? These are budget-related. And you and Lori, Lori should be doing it, because thanks to our, our treasurer and our village administrator, who, every time I came in just to pick up papers on the weekends, the two of you were working. So, so thank you for an incredible budget.
Sure. Do you want to first make a motion then, and have a second to open the public hearing then, to consider the 25, 26?
All right. I will make the motion, and I need a second to open it. Okay? All those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, maybe I'll just start as I always do for the public edification. We do have a hard copy of the budget available in the main office at Village Hall. We also have the full budget available on the village's recently redesigned website, under the Village Treasurer's page, along with a breakdown of all the individual fund summaries, also my narrative, on a snapshot of the principal summary of the expenses and changes and revenues for the period, along with some, some charts. So that's also available on the website, again, in addition to the, the full hard copy. But Mayor, if you'd like, I can just go through, again, some, some background on, as a follow-up to what we had our work session on, on April 1. So, and again, I encourage everyone to go, go to the website, look at the budget, or feel free to reach out to me, email me. My email address is on the village website, or email the, the village treasurer. And yes, and thank you, Lori, as always, for your commitment. So at the end of the day, the, the resultant impact for residents, based on the proposed 3.07 levy increase, means for the, the village's median value for a home now at $2,800,000, up from 206, $10,600,000 increase, an assessment of 200,000, would result in a tax increase of $417.40 for a total village median tax bill. Again, this is for a home now valued at $2.8 million of $9,920.40. And then also for a home valued at $1,510,000, the increase would be $232.93. So just some large snapshots. The total appropriations now are just over $21 million, at $20,277,575. That's a 4.48% increase from last year's budget. The non-property tax revenues are up considerably this year, up a total of $339,000 to $7,92,113. And out of that, our sales tax, of course, is still our single largest revenue source. And this year, we've budgeted that at 1.7, 1.7 million, which I, both the treasurer and I feel, based on data, that we can comfortably meet that number. Of course, our overall largest departmental revenue continues to be that from the parking revenues, which make up more than $3 million, if you start counting the, also the fines that are collected. So the, out of the $7 million non-property tax revenues, between the sales tax and the parking revenues, which is the parking meters, the permit fees, et cetera, account for more than half of that. Significant news, which actually resulted in a decrease in the tax rate, is the increase in taxable assessed value, as we have explained. As I explain in my narrative, it's been a very positive year, with the village's full value returning back to 100% and reaching a new, a new high at now over $3,678 million. Once again, the village is contributing $1,723,000 to the library. That's an increase of 4.7% from last year, or an increase of $78,15. As a reminder, most of the, the library's funding sources come from the village. So again, the village's tax base grew significantly, resulting in a tax rate decrease. The, the numbers that I just gave for the average increases is, again, as a result of assessments going from a previous meeting of 2.6 to 2.8 million. And again, the full report is, is available on the village website, so I don't want to, but as always, and of course, the board did have a work session, four-hour work session on April 1, going through this in detail. We also had members of the library board also present. Library board's here again tonight. Thank you. I don't know if the board had any specific questions.
I would just say, so you would say the main driver of the increase in expenses is retirement contributions for the, the police and the village?
So, right. So once again, so once again, yes, employee, employee benefits, which make up more than 25% of the budget, are, are a significant driver. The next item you'll be sketching the public hearing on will be the tax, the tax cap override. And since you brought that up, the, so the, the village's levy is increasing by 370, 307, just over $378,000 on a $20, $21 million budget. The tax cap would only allow us to go up to $309,000. And out of that, yes, the retirement benefits themselves were over $100,000 increase. So obviously, if we're going 378, almost more than a quarter of that is for the retiree benefits. This year, we did also have, the treasurer and I are budgeting, as you know, an increased amount for both our workers' compensation premiums, which are now budgeted at over $300,000 in the general fund alone. That's a significant number from where we previously were. But also not unlike what our colleagues are also experiencing. And this is why my goal coming in every day is to minimize risk for our employees, keep everyone health, healthy, keep everyone safe. And so we work at that. But those premiums are going across, are going up for municipalities across the board. And then also, the village's liability coverage has, is also increasing. And right now, we're still negotiating both with the workers' comp carrier and our liability carrier. But the village's, the general fund contribution alone for our liability insurance is now budgeted at $400,000. And that's up from $300,000 several years ago. Right now, we're, I think we're at a 9% increase with our current provider, which is the Travelers. But we're having discussions with them. We're looking at others out in the marketplace. But as you, as we discussed in our work session, they look at a five-year history. We have one, one bad year can have a significant impact. And one of those, when that one year gets dropped off, we'll be in a better negotiating position. But, but to answer, I'm sorry, your original question, yes, the, the benefits are a significant part of that. And the police and fireman contributions, and the employee retirement system is something that the village does not control. We literally just get a bill from the state of New York that tells us what our obligation is. And we get a slight discount for paying early in one lump sum, which we always do. But that number alone, between those two systems, is up over $100,000. And it has been increasing for the last couple of years. And there are different reasons for that, but I won't go through all that.
Any other trustee questions? No?
And what I'll say is, of course, what we can change, we do change. We do have collective bargaining agreements, as the board knows. The police are, we have the contract with the, with the police, and those increases are 2%. And then we also have a current contract with the, with the Teamsters. I think their increases are 2.5%. So obviously, we also budget for those salary increases. There are no additional positions added to in the budget, although last year, the board did authorize the increase to going to 25 officers to get the complement back up to where it was pre-Great Recession. So we're now at 25 officers in the police department. DPW remains steady. We've had some vacancies. We finally have the DPW fully filled. So that's real positive. We did make some changes internally, as you know, to remove some of our contractual engineering expenses and have an engineer in-house. And I will say, the, the county just approved on Friday our creation of the position of village engineer. So we've just requested that list, so we can canvass it. And, and again, with the goal of pulling some of those items that we've been farming to outside consultants and budget for, and doing in-house, so we can hopefully also try to expedite the, the approval process for, for residents. Thank you.
All right. And, yes?
Yeah. Mr. Palmer, if you could just comment on what I think is fair to say is a principle of conservatism, which applies through your budgeting process, by which I mean an intent to be very realistic, both on terms of expenses and revenues, and if anything, to be a little cautious, so that if the board has a surprise, hopefully, it's more a surprise on the upside than on the downside. Because I think that's important for residents to understand that, certainly since I've been on the board, I think this is my fourth budget process, I've always been impressed at how well you and treasurer Voss have done in matching projected needs to actual needs, projected revenue to actual revenue. Obviously, you know, some is up, some is down. But, but is it, is it fair to say that the budgeting principles that guide you, or that these are real budget numbers, that the community can have as much faith as, as anyone can have faith in turbulent times, that, that these numbers are in fact real and represent our, our best good-faith assessment of, of budget needs and revenue sources?
Absolutely. And Lori and I look at it throughout the entire budgeting process. We, actually, we start looking at the numbers the, the day after the budget's adopted, and we continue right up to the, the next year. So we follow it real carefully. The sales tax is a big number, so we reach out to the county. We, we study what the big drivers are for, you know, sales tax revenues. We study it right up to the current moment. There are some concerns out there, but one can only project so far. But, but yes, it's, based on the experience, yes, we feel, we feel real comfortable on those, on those numbers. And, you know, as you know, the items that have added to our fund balance over the years, when we talk about our wonderful not-for-profits between Iona University and the hospital, while they're tax-exempt, they do pay building permit fees. And we, we're cautious to budget those fees. When the hospital takes out a permit for a new chiller, you know, a $20,000 piece of equipment that's going to bring in a $200,000-plus permit fee, we're cautious about baking that in, because it's, it's a one-time item. But to the extent that we can, we, we do communicate with the hospital and Iona to plan a certain amount. And both of them are undertaking projects that are incorporated to a certain extent in those revenue numbers. But, but yes, Lori and I go, spent a lot of time at nauseam going back and forth. So, but yes, we, we go into this process right now feeling comfortable with where they are, and we continue to follow it throughout the year.
All right. At this juncture, this is when anyone in the audience would like to make a comment on the budget only, for the budget hearing. If anybody would like to make a comment. Okay. Trust, trustee Knapp reminded me that last year, we kept the budget hearing open, so that individuals who are not at this meeting, or are listening, or just want to read the budget on the website, have a little time to comment. So is there a date that makes sense, Mr. Palmer, to leave it open?
Well, I'll tell you, yes, the only thing, it just so happens that this year, we are, we're having the meeting a little bit later. So I would like to be able to, if possible, not to necessarily put you all on the spot, but I would like us to consider if you could convene next Thursday or Friday, the 24th or the 25th, or whatever your pleasure would be, perhaps morning or afternoon, to close the public hearing and adopt the budget, because, so we can get it up to Albany by, by that May 1 deadline. And what I would just encourage anyone in the community to do is, they can certainly email me at any point in time, and I would share those written comments with the board at the time of adoption. But is there a possibility that the, the board could convene next Thursday or Friday morning?
Yeah, I think it's important that we leave a little, that we don't close the budget hearing tonight. And so, yes, we'll figure it out.
All right. If you, if you could check in, let me know, and then, because then we will post that. So those are the two dates that I throw out. It's next, next Thursday, the 24th, or Friday, the 25th.
So comments would have to be by close of business, the 23rd?
Yes.
Okay. So everyone agree that we'll leave it open?
Yes.
And then we'll connect.
And then just let me know on the morning or afternoon.
Okay. Yeah. So anyone has comments, you can let us have your thoughts by April 23. Okay. And now I, my favorite topic, the property tax override. I think, Mr. Palmer, you're correct. We overrode by about $70,000. Was that?
Yes, $70,000, yes.
So we need to open, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And again, I think, right, so the, the principal issue here is, and this is, I actually did provide a chart on this, showing, again, the, the legislation, for everyone's understanding, for municipalities, it's a legislation that must have a, a public hearing each year to be considered by the board if they plan on overriding it, and adopted, and considered 10 days prior to the adoption of the budget. And this year's, and the, basically the language simplified is, the levy increases can exceed 2% or the rate of inflation, if someone was, if we were to stay within the cap. So again, to stay within the cap at 2% would leave us with an increase in the budget of $300,000, $309,000. And we just, it's just not financially something that the treasurer and I would recommend to the board. And as we discussed in our work session, you understood the reasons for that. But 300, $309,000, and again, what's proposed is a 3.07% levy increase to the taxpayer, or an increase of just under $390,000. So that's, and but, and part of the reason for overriding the, the tax cap is, again, one of the state's own principal drivers, which is the, the retirement, the retirement system numbers. The health insurance numbers are also increasing, although I think the treasurer and I budgeted that at more of a 5% increase this year. So it was not as great a hit. But again, when our health insurance bill for all the employees is 2.5 million, you know, 5% still, still adds up.
Well, we, you know, the irony of this, it comes from Albany, and they don't want us to spend, to go 2% higher, but they send us bills for double-digit increases. So, and the, the most interesting thing is, the only budget in the state of New York that's not held to a 2% cap is the state's budget. So this is good for everyone else but the state. So this gets my blood pressure going every year. So...
Right. And of course, what people may not realize is, if they read the budget, is the, the state budget has numerous funds. So what many communities do that have other funds, like a water fund, sewer fund, they start to take... funds, like a water fund, sewer fund, they start to take some components from the, the general fund and put it in those other funds. So, and those other funds are usually paid for through fees. So one community might reduce the general fund, but on the other hand, they're raising their, the fees that someone pays for their sewer water. So the state does something similar in that they have other funds that they also, that they also rely on.
Any trustee comments before I, anybody in the audience have a comment on the tax cap?
I just want to commend, you know, Lori and Jim and the staff for doing all that they've done to keep it at this low level. It's really.
Yeah. We came pretty darn close.
Yeah, $70,000 in a $20 million budget.
Yep.
And, you know what, I'm sorry, maybe I'll mention one other important piece for the public, though, is that is a principal part of our, our budget, is the village's debt service. All the infrastructure improvements that we make are not exempt from the cap. And this is where the public gets confused, because school districts do have debt service exempt from the, from the cap. You know, it's, there's little nuances. Some, some communities also get a bonus that they have new subdivisions. They might, they might be able to go a little bit above a 2%. But I did just want to remind the community that our, the village's debt service has been, is, is stable, and has always stayed in the range of 12% to 13%. And that's because you've, you've made the concerted effort over the years to purchase some significant items, such as the flood pump system, which was almost $15 million. We are still paying for that bond. And of course, we have the sanitary sewer infrastructure. We approved $4 million worth of sanitary sewer lining to reduce backups in someone's basement. Those are real tangible things, and we've matched all those with, with grants. Now, next year, there will be a significant, one of the bonds will be coming off, so that will be a real, a real positive. So of course, you work to try to schedule when we do take the debt service, when we take the debt service on and issue bonds and bands. But I just wanted to mention that, that too. Our debt service did go up slightly because we had that, that other bond. The good news is, next year, a bond is dropping off, which will result in principal interest by going down by almost $500,000. So that's, that's significant.
Okay. I think, can I have a motion to close unless there's any other comments? I think this is.
Vote to the close.
Yeah. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Do we need a roll call vote for this?
For the, for the tax, I put it under new business, but yes, I would recommend that you adopt it after, you closed the public hearing on the tax cap. If you want, you could approve.
Yes.
You could approve that now.
What you need is, you need a supermajority. It needs, it needs to pass by four votes instead of the usual three. It doesn't have to be roll call.
So we could adopt local law number one right now?
The tax cap override, yes.
Resolution.
Yes.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to adopt the resolution for the tax override? And it has to be a voice vote? Trustee Barron?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we, do we get a second?
Oh, I need a second.
We're just going to still move the, the opening of the resolution.
Okay.
For voting.
All right. Does everyone agree to open the resolution?
Now, we, we already opened and closed the public hearing.
Yes.
All you need now is a motion to adopt local law.
Yeah. Okay. And Bob moved that, so.
And I'll second.
Okay. And then we need a voice vote on adoption.
Sure.
Well, we need to call for the ayes and nays.
Just a roll call.
It's not a voice vote. We'd need to call for the ayes and nays.
It's a so-called roll call vote.
I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and do the roll call. Deputy Mayor Ondell?
Yay.
Trustee Barron?
Yay.
Trustee Knapp?
Yay.
Trustee Fredericks?
Yay.
And Mayor Marvin?
Yay. Yes. Thank you, Bill.
It is done.
Yeah. No, I know there's certain, we have to follow the rules. And very important. Okay. Then we're going to new business, and I would like to move that we accept the wonderful donation from the working gardeners for the dogwood trees at the tennis courts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor accepting this donation?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
We have a, thank you. We have a date for the dedication.
I do, I can forward it to everyone. Off the top of my head, I don't, I believe it's later, later in May. Marion, can you remind me to give?
Yeah, they just sent us a date that works for their team. All right. Mr. Palmer, anything you want to talk about? We have a resolution authorizing the purchase and funding of two new police cars.
Yes. Now, this is in the capital plan, and you might say, well, how come we're doing this so quickly? Well, we had an opportunity to get two hybrid vehicles that became available. Otherwise, we were waiting over a year to get a police car. So actually, in discussions with the Green Committee, they've asked us to try to do what we can to, and it was our intention to get purchase orders going early, but we, so we currently have two vehi, two hybrid vehicles for the police department on hold. So it matches our purchasing policy and our efforts to convert to hybrid, and we don't have to wait another year and a half for a vehicle.
Well, given the price of cars maybe going up.
And even better that they're, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we'd like to get this ordered tomorrow, right, Lori?
Good point. Okay. Would you like to move it, Trustee Barron?
Salute.
And a second?
I'll move it. Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right. And this is one, we're working with all our colleagues and hiring a special counsel to join other communities because the UnderconEd's proposed petition with the New York Public Service Commission, they would like to increase electrical rates by 18% with residential delivery charges increasing by 25.1%, and natural gas delivery rates rising by 19.1%.
They're already the highest in the country.
Yes, they are. So we're joining with our colleagues to, we have 20 municipalities, and we're going to be represented by an attorney, Joel Dichter of Dichter Law, to go before the Public Service Commission.
Right. What I should, what I should say is, I'm sorry, no.
Do we share this expense?
Right. So the way it works is, you know, so actually, I'm sorry, so this is, this was 20, our new assistant, Thomas, did a, a nice summary showing that actually now 38 municipalities, 38 out of the 40 villages and towns have signed on. So actually, what you're committing to at this point in time is, it was originally a $5,000 expenditure. Now we're really at approximately $2,600 because we're splitting.
So this 20 municipalities on the resolution is.
Now, almost the entire county. I think there's only two that have not yet signed on. And as you said, Mayor, this is, this is really a big deal, and this attorney has been successful in going before the Public Service Commission. He did this for New Rochelle, the old New Rochelle Water, for those rate challenges. And right now, Westchester's up against New York City and their rates. So the, the goal is to have someone representing Westchester's interests, and we can do that now for $2,600 with our neighbors. So it's.
A little brainer.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll move it.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And as is customary, the village always celebrates Arbor Day. And it's so nice on the heels of Trustee Fredericks' news about our partnership with the Conservancy, and then our partnership with the working gardeners. So it's a really good night to recognize Arbor Day. So I just need a motion that I may proclaim April 25th as Arbor Day in the village in Bronxville. And it says, "To celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands." And I think we are doing that. So I shall move this.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
May I at this point introduce the resolution that we discussed about in the work session that I circulated this afternoon?
All right. Would you like, absolutely. This is a good moment.
Yeah. This, this is a supplemental Arbor Day resolution authorizing the creation of a tree planting program in partnership with the Bronxville Historical Conservancy. And amongst the wherestes in here is just a quote from the Conservancy's prior work defining the landscapes of Bronxville that I mentioned earlier, where former Mayor Nancy Hand wrote, "This study," referring to the 2016 study, "is an effort to inform and educate the community. Perhaps the most productive strategy for addressing the village's environmental issues would be to emphasize changes that could be implemented quickly and at low cost. What about reestablishing the native tree canopy trees in the village? Every time a new tree is planted, it could be a native tree appropriate for the site. This would not be onerous." And then adding, "Understanding that ours is a living environment that is always changing. It is incumbent upon us to work towards being better stewards of our natural landscape, thereby ensuring the uniqueness of Bronxville for future generations." So this resolution formally approves the village's proceeding with a commitment to fund $25,000 towards the tree planting project, and authorizes the village administrator and the mayor to form an ad hoc group to help advise with some of the details. And I expect it will probably take through the summer to work out all of the details, but to get some valuable input from the Conservancy, from the Green Committee, and to, to really launch this in an effective way. So this is our, our commitment. And it's on the strength of that commitment that the Conservancy was willing to pony up $75,000 of its own. So again, with further deep appreciation, also expressed in the resolution, the Conservancy, I'd like to, to move the adoption that we proceed in partnership with the Bronxville Historical Conservancy towards implementing the pre-tr, tree planting proposal discussed earlier.
Perfect. I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Trustee Fredericks, really good work on that. That was a lot of your own.
Yeah. Thank you.
Spearheaded work, so thank you.
All right. Mr. Palmer, do you want to talk about a, a police department drone?
Sure. So this is authorizing the purchase of a drone to assist the police department at a cost of $14,065. And this will come out of that, the technology grant monies that we have, and so on. Of course, what the chief wanted me to emphasize is this, we have one officer, Dmitri, already trained in the, the use of a drone, which is quite advanced. And there's, there is a significant amount of training, and additional officers are in the queue. Now, some communities using these drones in lieu of police officers. That is not the case here. This drone is used, will be used to supplement the efforts of a police, of the police department in the matter of, say, an ongoing investigation, or perhaps.
Situation.
A situation. It could even be a building department issue, you know, a roof potentially collapses. They can, we can use the drone to assist the police department in conjunction with the building department. So not being used in lieu of, but in a supporting role, which has proven to be quite useful already, given, I think, that the town of Eastchester has purchased a drone, which I think we used on one occasion. So some communities are again now using them as response. We're not doing that. It's to supplement the, the police's, but let's.
Can I just ask, this, it'll be like on a specific case basis. It won't be, because I think maybe some people might be nervous that it's just going to be flying around patrolling. So it's not a patrol drone checking out activity. It's for specific cases where it's supplementing the officers.
Absolutely, right. It could even be for a person that's missing. The police have been trying to reach someone, and they're, the area where they could be going could be heavily wooded. So it's, it's another set of eyes. Yep, or something like that.
It does have infrared capability, so if there is a missing person, you could see it at night, too.
Okay. Who would like to move that?
I'll move it.
And a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. And last, but certainly not least, is appointment of Thomas Marzello as our new assistant village administrator. And let's see, Thomas has been this, what, week and, week and a half already, and he was very helpful with the information and getting the newsletter out. That was something that he previously worked on in Scarsdale, where he was for almost three years. And so, anyway, Thomas, thank you. We welcome you, and lots to do.
Yeah.
Lots to, lots to continue to work on, yeah.
We're, we're very glad to have you here. And Thomas has worked in Croton and Scarsdale. And we were talking about that it's a perfect mix in size and kinds of the population that he brought experience from two places that really kind of mesh with, mesh with our needs. So you're the perfect person, and welcome. And I would like to move this motion.
I, I don't think we should vote on the appointment until our new assistant village administrator has gotten to stand in front of Mr. Palmer, so everyone watching on the video can see who, who Mr. Marzello is. So without objection, I'd like to invite Mr. Marzello to come forward, so.
Good idea. Good idea.
Yeah. Do you tap dance or play an instrument? No? Okay.
Have you awarded him a lap pin?
Oh, yes. No, I haven't.
Oh, yeah. Come on, Jim.
Do the commemorative pinning another time.
Any ceremonies?
Yes.
Yeah. Just wave to the camera.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we all have our, have our good side, but I, I think Millet Hall, as you, as you probably know, Thomas, from your limited time here, you know, we're, we're very customer-friendly, and I think you're going to be the new best friend of, of some residents in the village. So, so welcome.
Great idea.
Thank you.
Yes. And did we officially, I moved to.
Move to second.
Seconds?
I think I should get to second, having made Thomas have to come.
All right. Yes. Do you mind seating that, Helen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of welcoming Thomas, say aye. Opposed? Perfect. Perfect way to end our business.
And, and do you go by Thomas, or Tom, or some other variation?
Thomas.
Yeah.
Great. I, I have a son, Thomas, who's exactly with you. Thomas all the way. So thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Trustees, did we forget anything? No? And then, at this juncture, anyone, this is when we have public comment, and anyone can make a comment on any topic. Yes, sir, please, if you would come to the microphone, and if you would give us a name and address.
James Maxsiner, 111 White Plains Road. And I'll just be a quick report on something you may be interested in. As you may know, I have brought an Article 78 action before State Supreme Court to get a correction of the zoning board's interpretation of the zoning code. Last Thursday, the code, the court gave me the green light to carry it on. And I would, calling it to your attention, because for one thing, I think the decision itself is very bad, not just for me, but for Bronxville. And I would urge you then, when you see this, to not worry about the motion that they just decided was a dismissal motion, but rather to look closely at the substance of it. If I may, I'll give you a few seconds of why I think it's bad, if that's okay.
So just before you proceed this, so I do want to caution the board that this is a pending litigation against the zoning board.
So we cannot comment.
I ask you, if you want, if you want to allow the gentleman to speak. Mr. Maxsiner is not only.
Would you be more comfortable?
One of the litigants, he is, he is the attorney in the action as well. So I just ask the board to not comment or respond in any way.
That's very well taken. I would not want anything to this, this guy. I just want to alert you to the issue, and I know you will then exercise your duty and look carefully. Basically, and I'm just very brief about this, basically, the process that we were given, both by then-building inspector and by the zoning board, did, did not amount to due process. And above all, it showed that the village is not paying attention to the leaflets. There are three booklets that the Department of State of the state of New York has put out to guide people like me, who are applicants, and the board, and the inspector, to carry out their duties. And these unfortunately were not. And these unfortunately were not followed. The other thing is, the substance of the interpretation was really, in my view, rather implausible. The village code, 310-10D4, allows fences or walls not over six and a half feet in height. That's true generally throughout all residential districts. The plain meaning of the code, in my view, is that a fence or walls not over six and a half feet means you can have a combination up to six and a half feet, but not more than that. The explicit language of the permit that was issued in this case was the maximum combined height may not exceed six and a half feet. In an earlier case, the zoning board decided that the total height may not exceed six and a half feet. Nevertheless, the board interprets 310-10 to allow, without a variance, both and a half, a six and a half foot wall and a six and a half foot high fence for a total of 13 feet. This is, this is as an interpretation, and those of you who are legal geeks will know, there's a big difference between an interpretation and a variance. So, it's not just for my case, it's for all future cases. In my case, it was only nine or 10 feet, but that would mean somebody could build a fence and wall together 13 feet, no variance needed. Well, modest fences made Bronxville what it is. If you look at the website of the building department, you will see they're not fences. And that's from a postcard from 100 years ago. It's plain on your own homepage, we're endlessly copied but never matched. Nobody's going to copy a 13-foot fence. So, I urge you to look at this carefully and see if you think the, the view of the zoning board of appeals is in accord with what you think we want to Bronxville to keep, the very Bronxvillian milieu that we know, that Mr. Fredericks has talked about. So, I'm just calling your attention to it. I'm sure you'll look at it carefully.
Respectfully, Mr. Maxsener, just would like to say on behalf of the village, that the village's position on these issues is set forth in the litigation papers, and I would not, I have advised the board to be silent and respond to this, and that should not, that silence should not be taken as any agreement or acquiescence to the positions that Mr. Maxsener stated.
No, I'm only, I mean, the board of trustees would ordinarily just say, oh, that the Board of Appeals is right. I'm saying this is one case where you, in my view, you should make your own view and then decide what to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. All right. I, we're meeting next, Mr. Palmer, on May, May 12? All right. Oh, I need a motion to close tonight's April meeting.
Yeah, can, can we also agree on a time?
And then you just, right, you just need to let me know Thursday, next Thursday or Friday for the meeting to adopt the budget.
Okay. I, can we do that not right on?
Yeah. Can we do that separate? Next regularly scheduled meeting.
Right. Yes. The next regularly scheduled meeting. Do I, and do I have a motion to close this meeting?
So.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we will see you on May 12 for the regular meeting, and there will be a budget approval meeting, which we will post as soon as we have everyone scheduled.
Great.
Okay.